Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School Board meeting. I will now yield to Dr. Gilbert.
We have special guests with us tonight. I'm going to ask Ms. Emily Spencer, who is the principal of Irma Siegel Elementary School, to come forward and introduce the scout troop and let them introduce themselves that are going to leave some pledge of allegiance. Ms. Spencer, would you please stand?
It is my pleasure to have Troop 452, that's from Siegel Elementary here, to do the pledge, and I'm gonna let them tell you their names.
My name is Kayla Freeman.
My name's Adam Heinrich.
My name is John Summer.
My name is Noah Ross.
My name is John David Constantine.
And would you please remain standing after the pledge, please?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Right at our Christmas break, Murfreesboro City lost Golena Bell. She was an employee of the district for over thirty years. She was the finance manager. Words that describe Golena, in addition to leader, are courage, integrity, gentleness, kindness, mentor, friend, and courage. So at this time, could we please have a moment of silence in honor of Golena?
Dr. Gilbert, I just want to say it's great to see the scouts here, and I appreciate the scouting program in our schools. As the mother of a new mother of an Eagle Scout, I know that what they, all the kid things they learn, all the character things, it's just so important.
Thank you. This week, we're celebrating our School Board Appreciation Week, and we certainly appreciate what you do on behalf of the schools, the children, the parents, the teachers, the administrators. We could not have the fine system we have without your support. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Vice Mayor Ron Washington, who has a proclamation. Ms. Wade, if you would join him, please.
Chairman Wade, I'm gonna have the mayor, and the Council of the Resolutions Resolution in the office of the mayor. Whereas excellent public education system is vital to the quality of life of our community and to the economic development of our state, and whereas school board members represent a tremendous resource as local decision makers diligently working to meet the challenges of a dynamic world.
While ensuring that every child receives the services needed for a quality education, and whereas school board members recognize the importance of improvement and progress in education and accept the responsibility involved with implementing those initiatives, and whereas the men and women elected by the people as members of our local school board deserve recognition and thanks for their countless hours of service to the public education in Tennessee. Now therefore, I, Tommy Brad, Mayor of Murfreesboro, do hereby proclaim the week of January 27th, February 2nd to the 13th, School Board Appreciation Week in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, and urge all citizens to join me in this worthy observance.
Thank you, Mr. Washington.
Thank you, ma'am, for your service.
And on behalf of the Murfreesboro School Board and our director, Dr. Gilbert, we certainly appreciate this. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
And I'm sorry, I have to give you a round of applause if I ask all this. Thank you all so much for what you do. We can't tell you how much we appreciate you, the support that you give, the policies that you put in place to make sure that we stay legal, but more than that, just the encouragement and the love that you have for the children. It really means the world.
I just have to take a minute.
Go right ahead.
And say, first of all, thank you to all the schools. The folks at home don't get to see all the awesome little, you know, treats that our different schools have done to say thank you or to acknowledge the city school board. But this was sitting behind my seat, and it's from Bradley, and I just have to show you what awesome work these kids did. I hope that the camera can get it. I cannot wait to take this home and have it in my house. I'll be so proud to have this in my home, and I want to thank the kids in all the different schools.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. We certainly are appreciative for all of our schools for their wonderful, kind, generous gifts that they gave us to celebrate our week. So, thank you. We'll now entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Dr. Gilbert, communications?
Communications, we have several thank yous. We'd like to thank Mike DeFreer and U.S. Bank for the generous $500 donation to the Mitchell Nelson Schools, and also Mitchell Nelson would like to thank Julian Harland, Will Coxon with Transformations for Life, and Third Baptist Church for their donations of time, talent, and money. We'd like to thank, as a district, we would like to thank Second Harvest Food Bank, who received a grant that will provide additional backpack food to serve sixty more Murfreesboro City students each month for the next three years. And congratulations to bus driver who drives bus 568, Mr. Dean Chapman, who was selected as WGNS's good neighbor on December 6th. Mr. Chapman was nominated by his students and parents, and I'd like to just give a shout out to the bus drivers and the magnificent job that they do. We could not have our children at school if they weren't there. They would absolutely shut us down if we didn't have our buses. Black Fox would like to thank Howard and Sally Wall. As you know, they have been supportive of Black Fox since its existence for their $5,000 donation and continued support. Bradley Academy would like to thank Jim Brewer and the Oflex Group for their $500 donation to the Bradley Bucks Store that supports the Positive Behavior Initiative, and of course, Bradley is a model for what is called the PBIS Program and does use Bradley Bucks. And also, Bradley would like to thank the Murfreesboro Rotary Club for the donation of seventy-two English and forty-eight Spanish English dictionaries that were given to our English language learner students and their families. We would like to congratulate both Irma Siegel and Mitchell Nelson Primary. They are recipients of the Tennessee Arts Commission Student Ticket Subsidy Program. Irma Siegel received an amount of $1,260, and Mitchell Nelson Primary, the amount of $1,300. And then finally, thanks to Dell for the donation of four hundred tablet covers. And those are your communications.
Thank you so much. Consent items, board. Are there any questions? And if there are none, we'll entertain a motion for the approval.
So moved.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Dr. Gilbert, we're going to yield to you for action items.
You had asked me to prepare a resolution for our legislators. One resolution you had asked for was about charter schools. The second was in opposition of a voucher program. These are currently, or at least we believe these will be on the table with the legislature, and so if you would like, Ms. Wade, I can read those resolutions so the public will know. The first resolution is a resolution of the Murfreesboro City School Board in opposition to statewide or alternate charter school authorization or oversight, and it reads, whereas public education unifies America and forms the bedrock of our freedom as a nation, and whereas the Murfreesboro City School Board is responsible for providing a local system of public education, and whereas the Murfreesboro City School Board consists of members who are popularly elected by the citizens of Murfreesboro, and whereas local school boards are held responsible for the success or failure of public schools, including charter schools, by state and by the electorate, and whereas for the past ten years, local school boards have successfully authorized and had oversight of charter schools in Tennessee, and whereas the State Board of Education has in place an appeals process if a charter application is denied by a local board, and whereas decisions impacting public education should be made by the elected school board, which has a physical presence in the community rather than an outside entity with no such presence, and whereas the establishment of a statewide or alternate authorizer or oversight authority would usurp the responsibilities entrusted to locally elected school boards by their constituencies, therefore be it resolved that the Murfreesboro City School Board opposes any legislation to create statewide or alternate charter school authorization or oversight that would bypass local boards of education.
Are there any questions for Dr. Gilbert? Here are none. We'll entertain a motion for the approval.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Board, I will place the first signature, and I will pass this down for your signatures. Dr. Gilbert?
The second resolution that you asked me to prepare is a resolution of the Murfreesboro City School Board in opposition to a voucher program in Tennessee, and it reads, whereas the Murfreesboro City School Board is responsible for providing a local system of public education, and whereas vouchers, frequently called opportunity scholarships, would siphon critical dollars and commitment away from public education to pay for private education tuition for a few students, and whereas the Constitution of the State of Tennessee has no mention of the maintenance or support of private or religious schools, and whereas promises of great improvement in the test scores of students who use vouchers and closing the achievement gap are not supported by evidence, and whereas the State Board of Education and Tennessee Department of Education have established nationally recognized standards and intensive measures for accountability in public education, and whereas the State Board of Education and Tennessee Department of Education are already engaged in intentional and purposeful efforts to increase the academic achievement and close the achievement gap for all students, and whereas because of these already implemented reforms, as noted on the Tennessee Department of Education's website, performance on the Tennessee Comprehensive Assessment Program, known as TCAP, improved for the second year in a row in 2012, as students made the largest gains in the history of the test, therefore be it resolved that the Murfreesboro City School Board opposes any legislation or other similar effort to create a voucher program in Tennessee that would divert money intended for public education to private schools.
Are there any questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Ms. Smith?
I think it's great that we're making these moves and resolutions. It's part of what we're here for, and if we don't have this voice for our community, part of our community is that we have really great schools, so I don't know why we need to differentiate from that. So I really appreciate our taking a stand, and where are we gonna, how will these proceed? Where will we send these?
These would go to the legislators.
Every one of them, or our local, but who will it go to?
Ms. Wade, I think that would be at your discretion. That's the board's discretion.
Okay, then I'd like to see those go to all the legislators that are gonna meet whenever we can get those down there, that's fine.
Especially those on the education committee.
Thank you.
Right?
Are you talking about all members of the education committee for the Senate, or are you talking about only from those that represent us?
Oh, and definitely the ones that represent us. Let them know where we stand.
Good. Okay. Jared, go ahead.
Jared?
Thanks, Dr. Gilbert, for putting these resolutions for us together, and also I just, I feel these vouchers are just gonna have, borrowing a quote from one of our local legislators, unintended consequences, such as taking state money away from our city schools, and I'd hate for us to do that, especially since we're doing such a great job here. So, thank you.
Thank you all for initiating these.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert.
No.
I'll make a motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor for the approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And Dr. Gilbert will get those right to you so we can get them out. Reports and information. Dr. Tammy Gussel?
Gussel.
Thank you, Chairman Wade, members of the board, and Dr. Gilbert. Before I report on the evaluation results for Dr. Gilbert for the 2011-12 year, I do want to say thank you, school board members, for what you do. Next week is School Board Week in Tennessee, and I just want to say this board is a very active board, and we sincerely appreciate what you do. It's not just these monthly meetings that you attend. School board members are mandated by law to attend training annually. This board goes above and beyond those seven hours of training and goes to other events and meetings and workshops that our association conducts throughout the year. So I just wanted your community to know that this is a very active board, and another piece of evidence of that is your voting on the two resolutions on vouchers and the possible statewide authorizer for charter schools. We know from the governor's office, there will be a charter bill this year, so I appreciate you passing those resolutions. Our office will also make note that your board has passed those two resolutions. By your membership in our organization, we have a lobbyist that works up on the Hill on your behalf, and will be sharing those with all legislators, so that will be noted as well. So thank you, Dr. Gilbert, for drafting those, and thank you, school board members, for your tireless hours you spend on being advocates for public schools. Our theme this year, and as always, but our theme for TSBA and for the State of Tennessee is local schools, local decisions, and I think we definitely, as some of you mentioned, we want to make sure we keep our schools local. So thank you for what you do. At your seats, I placed a copy of Dr. Gilbert's evaluation instrument with the results of each of those categories, and I will go through those. If you'll turn to the first page, Appendix A, the administrators were asked to complete this twenty-item survey of Dr. Gilbert's performance. We had sixteen administrators complete this instrument. Would you please note, though, on item twelve, for some reason, one administrator did not score item twelve, so I did not make a mistake. There's only fifteen listed, but I just wanted you to know that I didn't skip over that. The average score from the administrators was a 3.69 on a four-point scale, so a very, very good score from the administrators. Appendix B, Appendix B is on pages three and four. The Board of Education responded to that, and I'll report all board members completed the evaluation. There were six sections in Appendix B. Board relationship, which received an average score of 3.40. Community relationships received 3.82. Staff and personnel relationships, 3.28. Facilities and finance, 3.76. Vision, 3.33. And student achievement, 3.79. For an overall average score of Appendix B, a 3.56. Appendix C were the annual objectives. Dr. Gilbert received an average score for Appendix C of a 3.69. Those are on page five and six. Page seven, eight, and nine are comments that were made by various administrators and school board members, and those are there for you to read at your pleasure, and I can entertain any questions. But the last page is page 10, which the overall evaluations score of all three sections for the 2011-12 evaluation of Dr. Gilbert is a 3.63 on a four-point scale. So I think a congratulations is in order for Dr. Gilbert on an excellent evaluation. And even though it comes with a job, Dr. Gilbert, where you have to sit here and listen to yourself be evaluated in front of, you know, the entire city, I just want to say hats off to you and your work and your professional attitude as we, you know, review the evaluation.
I appreciate that. I can assure you that it's the administrators and teachers in the school district that do the work.
Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Gussel? Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have one more item before you dismiss me. The timeline, just so we stay on track for our 2012-13 evaluation of Dr. Gilbert, this is the timeline we approved at the last meeting, and if we need to adjust some of those times, I know we never seem to know when we're gonna get our scores in, so that timeframe, and Dr. Gilbert and I will work on that, but this is the tentative timeline for us to complete her 2012-13 evaluation. So any changes to that, if you have any, just let me know, but that's, this is the timeline that I will be working on and reporting back to you all for this school year's evaluation. But thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I want to thank the board for their support very much. Thank you very much.
That's quite a report card.
There it is.
Something like that?
I think you pass out after it. That's what happens.
And if I know Dr. Gilbert, she'll take this document and study it, and she'll get a better report card next year.
Take it apart. Disaggregate those scores, as the term goes. As far as the remainder of your reports and information, we have personnel update, monthly revenue and expenditure report, and attendance report. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gilbert. On the financial report, we are in good shape at this time of the year. Our revenues look a little slower coming in. A lot of that has to do with the timing of the report and the timing of when we receive the monies from the governmental agencies. The expenditure side is also in good shape. We're at forty-four percent of the expenditures. Last year at this time, we were at forty-eight point five, so we're in good shape on the financial pieces. As you know, we've changed over our accounting program, our software, and some of the percentages are different than what they would normally appear to be, and what that is, is us going through and making sure that we put the things in the right categories, because the numbers were different in when we code things in, and we are cleaning all of those up. But the bottom line is right, it's the individual accounts that are according to one account versus another, and we'll have that all fixed here in the next month or so. So I want to go over that with you. Does anyone have any questions on the financial piece?
Ms. Renier?
I have to find it first, I'm sorry. There are a couple on the, let's see, on the expenditures, actually, I was gonna call you and I forgot, on the expenditures, for instance, line, some of these have basically doubled. It's hard for me to find it, because I have to go back and forth. Under guidance, like last year at this time, we had spent forty-two point two percent, and now eighty-two point three percent. There's another one where we've spent seventy-four point three percent, last year was thirty point four percent. What's going on that we're doubling our expenditures? Is that...
As I mentioned earlier, we're having some accounting, guidance had a half a million dollars reported internally through the numbering system, and it really doesn't belong there. If you look at your regular instruction line, the salary is down a million there. It's because we're going through and reallocating each number. We're checking each individual employee to make sure they're reporting to the proper code, and guidance was one that was not reporting properly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The next report is on the enrollment. Our enrollment is up thirteen students from the previous month. We are one hundred and fourteen more than what was budgeted, but that's always good news. As far as growth looks, we are four point three percent over the beginning of last school year, and we are three point eight percent over the end of last school year. So that puts us in good position to get growth money. The state will determine the growth money at the end of January, so we should have a report in the beginning of February of how much that'll be. Also, our attendance percentage, that was last month ninety-five point eight, this month ninety-five point three. The state reported that to the federal government, and they said that Tennessee is one of the two states that have not experienced tremendous amount of the flu, and so we seem to be getting out of that. So as you can tell, obviously, if we're over ninety-five percent, we've done very well. The other state, by the way, was Hawaii. If anybody wanted to switch states here, but that was the other state that didn't have that experience. Our PTR ratios for K through three are nineteen point oh eight, once again staying below the twenty, and our four through six is twenty point nine six, so we are in good shape in an average PTR of nineteen point seven six. Overall, enrollment looks really good for this year at this time.
Ms. Renier?
This is from December the 10th, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Was that the date?
That is correct.
So how were our figures when we came back after Christmas? Did we gain a lot?
From the few principals that I have spoke directly with, that we have increased in students coming after, coming in after the holidays. I don't have those numbers, because we get the twenty-day report, and I base this report on the actual twenty-day report to the state.
I was in a couple of the schools, and in one, I think they told me they thought they had ten new students, and the other one, nine or ten. So I'm sure we're up, but of course, I'm sure we lost some as well.
Sure, and we always do. There's always movement throughout the district and out of, in and out of the district completely. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Smith?
At the last public meeting, or at the last televised meeting, we talked about some of the schools having to hire new teachers, and did that take place?
We were...
Because of the numbers?
We were looking and monitoring that, and I'll just give you an example of Irma Siegel. If you want to look at K through three at Irma Siegel, the number there is twenty point four six. The state max is twenty point four nine, but I checked with them, and they, I think, I believe they dropped three or four students, so they're fine, in good shape. But as soon as I saw that number, I was on the phone and saying, okay, where are we now? So, we're fine. We haven't had to hire any additional ones under the state rules, so we're okay right now. But that can change as we move through the semester.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Anderson? Any other comments about our attendance?
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes?
Mr. Campbell?
I guess it's gonna relate. Where are we pertaining to our building program? I'm assuming that would relate to our attendance, because, well, that's how I'm trying to get that question in.
Okay, on the building program, are...
On our new school.
Okay, on our new school. Okay, well, can I give you a quick update on Hobgood first? As you know, we have the additions at Hobgood. They are under construction. We had a lot of bad weather that kind of hurt, hurt the construction stop. They tell us they are still on target to complete that school on time for us to take it over in July, so we are hopeful that that will progress as we should. On the new school, we are still in the midst of looking for the final piece of property. We've narrowed it down to three pieces, and we are trying to hone in on the exact piece. The city is really helping us on that now. They have stepped in to help us with the negotiations part, so we're kind of waiting for all of that to progress. The building design is basically ready after what you've approved. We're just waiting on the right piece of property, because you'll have to always make some changes depending on the landscape of the property, but that's where we are right now.
Thank you for that update, Ms. Anderson.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any other business that you'd like to see on the next meeting agenda, which will be our second Tuesday night policy meeting?
School board compensation.
Okay, if you have any, Mrs. Phillips has one, Mrs. Rittley, she'd like to see on there. If you all would send Mrs. Rittley an email, copy Dr. Gilbert, and we'll get those on the agenda for you. If there's nothing else, all of you've had a chance to see your wonderful books that were donated in your name. Make sure that you look at it and leave it, so we can get it back to the schools.
And go read it at the school. That would be awesome, too.
And if you'd like a Common Core exercise, you can see Dr. Brooks afterwards, and she could take you through that.
This has been a wonderful meeting for us, and certainly we want to thank the schools again for adopting the school board members and making us feel special on our week, and if there's nothing else, oh, before we adjourn, we had visitors tonight from, I think it's Leadership Rutherford that was here, and we're so happy they came by to be a part of our meeting, and thank you so much. If there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.